Data you wanted.
Sharon, we're live.
Hey, welcome back, everybody. We're still in our afternoon session. Our next agenda item is a budget workshop for salaries and benefits. I'm not sure who's running this show, so I'll turn to whoever that is.
And wait, where's the heart defibrillator again? You didn't know CPR?
Let us explain, Mike and I kind of explain what happened there with that analysis that Gabby has. So, I went out and looked at the market and I kept that lower range, one that starts at fifteen forty-seven. When you look at inches across the board, that is just too low. Even for an entry level position. So, I started looking at things, you know, other counties I looked at. Indeed, I looked at cities. I looked all over and decided that we needed to raise that. So, we are what that means is that we're increasing that bottom range from fifteen forty-seven to sixteen oh eight. And with that, because we do that, then we have to move everything else up by four percent. So, all the ranges, everything went up by four percent, and that's the baseline. So, if we move the salaries up.
Pat, because you probably have a lot of employees listening to you, Mike, would you move that?
Oh, yeah. I have a pretty loud voice, but yeah. So, because we because all the ranges are going up six point four percent, we, everybody got at least a four percent, I mean, not six point four, four percent. Everybody would get at least a four percent raise, but we have to give them on top of that four percent. Something or somebody that's been here two years will be paid the same as somebody that started yesterday, and that's not right. So, we don't want that. So, what I suggested is a one or two percent raise on top of the four percent. So, that's why this looks like holy cow. That's what happened.
So. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, so I was just gonna explain. So, the green is where their current out, the purple is the wage adjustment based upon the range moving the roughly four percent, and then I have it in right now. It's a two percent on top of that for this H I call. This is calculated.
So, everything.
Four plus the two.
So, you're at six percent calculation.
Kind of the max of what they're suggesting or recommending.
So, the two percent is for everybody, not just those at the bottom of the range?
Yeah, that's for everybody.
Okay. Because I think there's seven or eight that are still at the fifteen.
If you're there fifteen forty-seven, then I, that's probably at the current range.
So, if we move that to sixteen oh eight, then the new people coming starting will get that, which is a four percent above what.
Right, but it would, they wouldn't, we wouldn't give it to that, anybody in that range until after the bu- pub- after the budget is published, I could spit it out. So, yeah, because they wouldn't get the six percent raise when they came in, right? So.
And we have nothing in here as far as the increase in medical insurance, correct?
That is, no, just a separate line item. Well, yeah, no, that's not being brought into this.
Even figured into this. So, this raise is gonna cost, just what did I say? Seven hundred and ninety-one thousand?
Well, and that's without the road department, because it's in a separate budget.
Separate budget, but. And what about remind you of that?
And Gabby, where's the, maybe I'm missing, there we go. A whole tab. So, without knowing what the the insurance is gonna cost us also, I mean, because that nine percent on top of our existing premium is what another?
At nine and a half, that is the maximum that our premium could go up?
We don't know for sure what it is, though, yet?
We do. It's gonna be nine point five percent.
Good. Have you figured those, Gabby?
Unfortunately, the benefits are broken down between both general fund and then five or six other funds, so it's not one pool. It's easy, I, so I have not done it to all of them. Bulk of our employees are in general. So, that makes it, and it'll grow up over a hundred, less than a hundred thousand dollars.
Is that?
So, we're probably talking close to a hundred thirty thousand, maybe.
Is that the raw data without the fifty percent the employees pay?
This is just county.
Oh, just county?
Just with county. So, just counties, so just our employees, or does this include the fifty percent we pay toward? This is how much the county pays for employees in the best. Okay.
But don't.
So, then.
Don't delete that okay just a second.
We know what work coms going up, what, you know, social security and, I mean, FICA and all the rest of them, yeah?
They haven't changed in years. Haven't changed in years.
That, those are percentage, though. We'll have to increase those lines to cover the difference in people's salaries.
The difference.
They'll go up because of that.
Right, right.
Percentage of themselves still. If you do a six percent, I would increase each of these lines by six. Six percent.
The difference there is a little less than eighty thousand dollars. Seventy-nine thousand, and that's just for county employees.
But if you put in the six percent adjustment on
Yeah.
All those other lines, you know, we're easily another a hundred thousand on top of
Probably closer to.
This total cost for raises.
Sure.
We're at nine, we're at a million, million one.
About almost nine hundred ninety thousand.
Well, by the time you do roads and this.
I'm guessing it's gonna be seven ninety-one. Be a little over nine hundred thousand. We could take it out of the sheriff's budget.
Well, and that doesn't include the hundred thousand for the prosecuting attorney's office and the increase of the four age department.
Nope, that's two more employees.
An employee and a half.
Oh, yeah, yeah, because ones already have.
This is taken in. That's on here. Apparently, we did for new positions, they're listed here. That's the estimate of what we made.
Oh, good. You have that up there with benefits.
So, I remember one division wanted to we wanna do this without using names, one division wanted to raise an employee to the next level in their pay grade. Is that incorporated into this? It is, okay.
It's in the analysis that we sent to Gabby that she put.
Okay. And I put that probation having levels put in supply moving every one. Okay, lining and zoning.
Lining and zoning.
All of these, that is in here, okay. I think it just depends on how much new construction we get, because a million one, I, you know, you got three percent over last year's budget, Doug, what do we have to play with this year?
That's the ultimate question. I'm just wondering if we should look at a five percent instead of a six percent.
Yeah, and that's possible. I, I just, we just need to have something above that four percent. Because we can't have people spinning at that entry level for two years. It's just everybody else.
All the elected officials do.
They get raised like everybody else does.
You'll start at the same as me.
I know, I know, I know.
Everybody starts at the same as Doug.
And, and I did look at that survey that we talked about, and for this year, they didn't show differences. Everybody's paid the same, so that must have been a thing they did just recently.
Gabby, do you have a way to go in on the general fund and take that times five percent? I know you, some easy way to do that.
So, what's our last year's budget that we can actually?
One point oh. Yeah, one point oh five.
I'm being pushy.
So, we picked up about so we picked up about eighty thousand. So, every percent's about eighty, no, that's not right.
That's not road department, though. That's only.
That's not right. Seven hundred ninety-one. Yeah.
I added road department in that last conversation. There plus.
Twenty-five, isn't it?
That makes a difference of about a hundred thousand overall.
Yeah.
And that's before the new employees. We can put it all together with the six percent increase with everything, you know. Uh, we need to use five percent and six percent. I think it's gonna be a little tight this year.
Well, we, it's hard to know until we see the revenue side of it.
Right.
So, I guess all I can say is it looks okay. We'll wait until we see the revenue and go from there, but it seemed to me like last year, Pat, you might remember, Doug, the increase was four hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Something like that.
So, now we've doubled that. We still made it last year.
It's, it's, it's tough.
Well, we've just taken all of our pill.
Yeah.
All you're doing is moving money from one bucket to another bucket.
Yeah.
To satisfy these long-term expenditures.
And it's tough, but the market is, it's just going bonkers. I mean, you know, and, and I was just talking to somebody and they were talking about what's going on down in Valley or Ada Can- Ada and Canyon County and the cities there. I mean, they have more money than we do, and they have more to spread it out, right? But when you look at how counties and cities are increasing pay, especially in the sheriff's office, be able to bring people in, they're probably not getting any more applicants anyway, because people just aren't applying, but aside from that, when we have to compete with that, plus people can't live up here because of the housing.
Well, and that's my issue, the, you know, we're, we're raising that fifteen forty-seven up to sixteen, that's still not enough to afford a house.
No, it isn't. It isn't.
I don't even know what it would be, probably twenty-four, twenty-five bucks an hour.
Maybe.
Maybe you could afford a house.
Yeah, I mean, and, and that's the trouble, is that you're trying to take, you know, you've got, you've gotta take small steps to get to where you need to go on something like this. I can tell you out there, you've got the gas stations in McCall are hiring at fifteen bucks an hour to start the, you know, people bussing tables at restaurants in McCall are getting nineteen, twenty an hour. And, yeah, we're gonna be hiring professional career-minded people here, and yes, we offer the benefit package to go along with that. But it is, it's almost like an annual process you're gonna have to do, and if you stay with it, stay the course, you'll thank yourself down the road. And when, I know the state of Idaho got behind, where they gave up for five years giving anything out, and now they're down there just hemorrhaging. Having to make really hard decisions to try to get those wages back up to market value in government.
Didn't they come out with an eleven percent increase for state this year?
Yeah, they did. I don't think they went that high. I think last year, I wanna say they might have gone as high as seven. This year, I was hearing four to five, is what they were doing for, but they'll also target specific positions or classifications from time to time. But, you know, I guess the thing to think about is, when it comes to government, is we would get a lot of people, legislators that would say, look, I'm a limited government person, therefore, you know, I don't wanna pay our state employees anything, and it's like, there's a difference between limited government and cheap government. And I think most people would say.
I'm using that line.
You can take it, please run with it, but the idea that, you know, because I'm a limited government person as well, but where there is government, you know, whether they're in a patrol car, whether they're upgrading a road, I want competent government where they have to be. And I think most people will agree with that as well.
Sheriff, have you looked at all to see where we are with ISP and McCall PD? I mean, are we in there as far as the sheriff's positions?
I don't have that information. We were a couple of years ago, but I don't know where we are.
Well, that, that one actually went up a little as well, before we even added the four percent. So, keep in mind that, that we have leveled the playing field between detention and patrol. So, that's gonna be another increase. Detention's gone up a little bit, or quite a bit, the last couple of years.
Where are we between McCall PD, though, and ITD? Do we know?
I don't have ITD numbers. I looked at other counties and, and looked through them, but we can take a look at that.
They're trying to fill positions right now?
Everybody's trying to fill positions.
I'm curious as to whether we have.
Every. Yeah, I don't know either.
McCall's constantly chirping that we take their employees, so I'm curious is
I thought it's been the other way around. I don't know what they're chirping about.
This was their city council, so.
But if you look up here at the sheriff, the sheriff's wages, you know, they, they went up quite a bit. So, when you think of a, somebody coming in to be trained at twenty, almost twenty-five bucks an hour, and then a patrol one at twenty-seven fifty, and, you know, there is a progression with the sheriff's office that is pretty clear, and it goes, it follows what post says as a deputy two and a deputy three, and then to advance. So, people have a ladder that they can go up if they want to. And we, we train them, we work on them to get them moving in that direction, so we work with them. We're doing everything we can to keep people.
Yeah. Mr. Mopkin, you had asked what we levied for last year was nine million seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and four dollars. So, with the three percent, it's gonna be nine million three hundred and fifty thousand one hundred and thirty-eight. But we don't know what our new construction value is gonna be that we'll be able to add. Last year, our new construction value was a hundred and twenty-five million, which allowed an additional a hundred and ten thousand to be put on the roll. I don't believe our new construction is gonna be that high, but I don't know. We won't know for a bit of time, but.
Doug, I'm sorry, but when you, when you gave me that first number, I totally didn't get that. We levy for nine million seven seventy-three, eight oh four.
Yeah, so next year, adding the three percent to that will be nine million three hundred and fifty thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
But that's less than we did last year. How does that add three percent? Am I missing something?
Nine million seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and five dollars.
Have an extra seven in there, darn it. Hey. I'll make this more sense.
And then for, I can break it down for you, but the general fund was seven million one hundred and seventy-three thousand alone.
So, we're only gonna have about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars? So, we have no money to do this with. I mean, if we're asking for a million one and we have three hundred and fifty thousand, that doesn't.
As even the chairman said, we'll have to look at the projected revenue. We're gonna potentially get an increase in our sales tax distribution. But yeah, it's, it's difficult to do, absolutely. I do envision us, the commissioners, potentially utilizing more of our pilt dollars to fund.
Well, I wouldn't even, we'd have to use all of it and not even be able to do it, and then we're just setting ourselves up for failure two years from now, because we, you gotta be able to keep up with the increase in salaries moving forward, too. So, you have to have something that's sustainable as we move forward, so then we best sharpen our pencils. That's not gonna fly. Especially with insurance.
What did you say new construction ended last year, a hundred and what, twenty-seven thousand?
A hundred and ten thousand. It was one, a hundred and twenty-five million eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand six hundred and eighty-seven, which allowed an additional a hundred and ten thousand to be put on the roll.
Oh, geez.
We'll tell you on the benefits survey. Almost everybody wants to stay with where we're at. So, I do have a comment that somebody put in there, and again, that's anonymous. I have no idea where it came from. But I do wanna send that comment to you. I think it's important and relevant to think, see what employees were thinking about us paying out monies to other entities, so that I am going to send that to you. Because I think sometimes from the, us sitting back and you're giving money to, you know, whatever soil conservation, I'm just gonna use them, or.
Oh, okay, okay, the community stuff.
Yeah, the community people that come in and you're, you know, you just agree to give them money. I think employees are seeing that, and they're not comfortable with it, so I'll send you that. And it's, you know, it's just a comment. You guys take it with what you want.
And it's a legitimate comment, because we've told them, if we have it, we'll share it. If we don't, we won't. And then we may be coming to that year where that's, where everybody's gonna take a slice. But you don't, oh, shoot. You don't know a new construction is yet.
So, Gabby just looked up McCall, city of McCall, and we're right about the same as they are for this year. Next year, it may change.
So, if I'm, just roughly in my head, if we got the same new construction as last year, if we raised another a hundred thousand dollars or so, and it puts us at a half million dollars, and then, so then all we have to do is figure out that past two or three hundred thousand or four hundred thousand if we're gonna go with the bigger percentage. Except for I'm not. We have to take some off of those two new positions.
Yeah, until we get closer, I know what our what our values are, what our new stuff is. I, it's just gonna be tight.
I don't think we're gonna be able to do the six.
We're not gonna be able to do the six. And, I mean, I know that you wanna do a cost of living adjustment of four, but you probably need to look at a two.
Uh, well, and we can do that, but how badly do you want employees?
I understand that, but if we don't have it, we don't have it.
We don't have it. I understand that.
We're gonna have to give them all options.
I understand that.
Well, and I think what, my challenge every year's always been, oh, do we support these community-based organizations, or do we put the money into our employees?
And that's what the employee was commenting on, you know, because
Want to give us a little money to do this job.
And so, what employees also need to understand, those that are listening, so some of the funds that we do is to support employees, because shelters, you know, battered abuse, you know, our employees go through that, too. Ability to ride a bus. Our employees need that ability to ride the bus. So, there's a lot of things that some of those entities support our employees also.
Which makes sense.
Some of it is, yeah, just.
Some of it, I don't think it.
The senior centers closed. We're not gonna be supporting that, but that's eighty-five hundred dollars. Doesn't exactly make a big difference in our overall budget. But again, you're supporting constituents in the community that, you know, those are really difficult conversations to have. We will definitely have that conversation. It's gonna be difficult this year.
Well, thanks, everyone. All we can do is the best we can with what we got.
Yep.
We need to know new construction values first.
Realistically, we won't have that information until mid-July.
Who's printing assessment notices this week? We'll send them out next week, so, you know, but then she's gotta have a chance to calculate those, too, so. And, but we'll get pretty good. We just won't get the BOE stuff on it, but we'll get pretty close, but. Will be a tough one. Will be a tough one, right? Well, we knew that this was a possibility. I mean, we did, we took, till last time, I mean, we increased our budget by a hundred thousand dollars when we added a bunch of new positions. But when you do that, you know you're gonna, it rolls downhill, so we've got to be careful about adding new positions as we move forward.
But we seem to be in a good place, because we haven't added any except for that one this year.
Adding one point five.
One and a half, yeah.
Hey, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
We're smiling until we're not. Yup.
Yeah.
I thought it was gonna be a tough year.
Yep. Thank you.
All right. Back to.
Back to a few more, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Mopkin.
Looking at general fund.
Welfare direct. Who's the welfare director?
We know when you find what page it is.
It is on page thirty-eight.
Oh, wait, you're on.
Our homemaker program and this basically goes to white gap.
Yeah, so I think we do need to talk to, like, to get the commissioner's opinion about the contribution to white gap. We budgeted twenty thousand in previous years. That was reduced. You know, that commissioner Mopkin, are you on the board?
I am. And I have.
I don't know if they've made a request or.
I have asked them to provide me a full list of how those funds are gonna be spent in Valley County. So, I don't have that yet, but hopefully within the next two weeks, I'll have that. But, so having given the second, we've been budgeting twenty. I think we'll leave it on there until I get that report, and then I'll share. And actually, they should be come in and request it.
Uh, want to present to the commissioners, because we have brought them up in the past, and I don't know.
I think we should.
If that's gonna take place.
I will reach out.
We've been at twenty-three, seven hundred for the last three years.
Yeah.
Where are we going next?
Um.
General Fund Reserve.
General Fund Reserve, I mean, that's, one that we just want a general idea of what the commissioners are thinking.
I guess, have we spent anything out of that? We haven't, have we?
Last year, we expended thirty-one thousand. Oh, wait, let me make, can I pull it up? Sorry. I'm spinning right now. My computer is spinning one percent.
You're spinning? Shimmering Christmas.
Last week, our general cash, our remaining cash was six point five million. I don't know how that waits to reserve.
All this stuff that we do, the community stuff, isn't even total a hundred thousand.
It doesn't, it's just minimal.
It really is, commissioners. It's, it's significant, but it's the big scheme of things.
The overall.
And that work is all work that we would be doing for the most part.
Except for the boss. I, I mean, I don't know.
Except for what?
The transit.
Well, yeah, but our employees ride the transit. We got a number of employees. That's how we get employees to get to work. I think there's some there would be a great concern, maybe, if we didn't have that ability.
Well, and the general fund reserve, we've always done three hundred and fifty thousand, but.
Is that just going to carry over, Doug?
Yes, if it's not expended, it's accounted for in remaining cash.
We got a lot of carryover right now. I don't know what that's been identified as. I don't know what's standard for a county. I mean, is that part of our, the stuff that Clearwater's gonna provide to us? Our financial analysis?
Our auditor has provided that information of what it was last year, right?
What is standard in, in, you know, our size county? Is there a standardization model that we should be following, or, you know, are we saving for something specific? Or, those are the kind of questions that I would have.
On the general fund reserve stuff, you mean? Well, the good news today, we're, Brian, that we're not gonna have a Capital One burger case, so that's really good news, 'cause that can cost you three, four hundred thousand.
No.
Yeah, I guess I'm.
We, so far this fiscal year, we've expended six hundred dollars in the general fund reserve. That was for title report. And every year.
How much is in there? Is that a trust that I can see, Doug?
No, the general fund reserve is within the general fund.
Okay.
And what we usually, usually use that money for is when departments over expend their budget, we transfer money from the general fund reserve to cover those overages. Last year was. Last year was nineteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars.
And we all, that also carries us when we are not gathering tax receipts, which is usually in October, but I mean, I don't know what our operating costs are per year or per month, but they're nowhere near what we've got in there, so. Had you guys outlined, was, is there some plan in place, is what I'm asking? Is there a plan in place that, where those reserves? I mean, because we-
Because we're in that we, sorry, interruption.
Cause we're just acquiring some. So is this year, we don't really need them, because we already have acceptable funds? Or if we were planning for something specific by setting that aside, then that's a different conversation.
General fund reserve to me was always my emergency money.
And that is correct, it's an emergency fund as well, a- as I explained, we use that to cover when departments go over budget, their overall budget, at the end of the year, we do a journal entry to move that money from the general fund reserve to pay for those overages. Uh, last year, it was twenty thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars. Not a big amount. But there should be something in there.
And this goes back to our setting up some type of a policy on minimum balances, you know, what we're targeting for health and for, you know, our cash reserves. Trying to identify, what does that look like?
Yeah, and this isn't a cash reserve, this is a specific expense line for, like, Mr. Chairman said, for emergencies or at the end of the year, when we need to move money, yeah.
And looking at it though, this year, with knowing what we want our salaries-
If we, if the commissioners have an opportunity to reduce that amount.
Yes.
Yeah, that would be- We needed another hundred thousand, if we could fly, that's where they would do it.
This would be the, an expense account to do that in, for sure.
So, but you also have, right now, there's a lot of money. Where are those funds targeted?
So you're talking the remaining cash that you see?
Yes.
Yes, what, what those monies are gonna be used for is to fund next year's budget, right? A- and I know that there's always some hesitation of funding salaries with that remaining cash, but they could fund some of these capital, uh, equipments that are being proposed, right?
Are all of the capital equipments, are all the CIPs in the budget right now?
I believe that they are. All of them, I believe that they are.
And how do the grants, line items equate in budget? I mean, because we don't know if we've gotten those grants, so Larry's setting aside two million dollars in the grants.
No.
We don't know if that income's coming in.
Correct.
It's not expended if it's not, however, how does it impact the bottom line of the budget?
Well, i- i- again, we have to have a balanced budget, right? So we have to have that expenditure and then we also have to have the revenue, so. If we know that there is going to be, this is where it gets a little tricky, is when you have those grant match dollars. Um, especially for, I'm, I'm trying to process in my mind how we're gonna do that specifically for, uh, for the recreation grants, right? Um, if we're going to be utilizing ARPA dollars potentially for those matches, that's not within the general fund. So will we account for that revenue? In my mind, we're gonna account for that revenue being ARPA, and then in the revenue side for recreation grants, we're gonna put two million to, right? And then two million on, uh, the expenditure side.
Okay, and then just-
And then we'll move that money from ARPA into the general fund. But if we didn't have that ARPA dollars, we would have to use general fund money and reduce the amount in our projected revenue specifically for that grant. I don't know if, hopefully I explained myself.
You did.
What my mind thinking.
I have a conversation with you tomorrow, I love that.
Can we, you wanna go to next, Doug? Airport?
Uh, airport, we have not.
You have an ass rating?
No, we haven't seen, um-
God, darn it.
Anything from the from the cities regarding additional money, so that's just generally been the twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Is that just an automatic, they think we're gonna do that for them or on their behalf without them requesting it?
Yes.
Always been that way since I've been here, but part of that discussion involved around, if we give them money, then we have the ability to use the airports for evacuations and fire camps, and there's a bunch of stuff that-
Didn't once say disabute that. That, he said though, that there's emergency funding for all of that, that isn't out of ours. I think there's a contract on those. I remember though.
Well, I know they use it for match money for grants, or usually for paving. Fairgrounds and buildings.
I think, I don't know, I, I would assume that they wanna come in and present to the commissioners, uh, their budget requests. I've been trying to communicate with Casey to see if they wanna get on the agenda, unfortunately our I haven't been able to, uh, catch up with her, my goal is to get in contact with her this week to try to schedule something from fairgrounds to make a presentation to the commissioners.
Didn't they have, Scott's got stuff in his budget too, in CIP, right?
Yes.
Yeah, but we joked it up and from forty-nine, seven fifty to seventy thousand. Like, was that for the bleachers, Doug?
No, that was just for operations.
Well, we did that though, to give them their portion of it and then to fund Scott, because it's outside of general fund. So Scott's, needs to have some of that in his budget for building improvements down there.
He does, he has twenty thousand budgeted.
But that's only in the general fund.
Correct.
So in order to buy those bathrooms and everything else, this is where you could do that also.
You could.
And their budget now needs to give us a bottom line on, this is your income, these are the expenses, this is what I need funded by the county. And the rest of that is gonna go back into fairground improvement. Right? Am I thinking of that incorrectly?
We're not looking at villages and grounds, when are we gonna do that? We already did that budget.
Already did that.
And we put in villages and grounds.
By us and the fairgrounds, because they can go up to a, what is it, six percent, and they can go up to a hundred and five thousand or something like that. And, but, we don't want them, I, they need to give us the budget they need.
This is included in our overall, what you can levy for, right?
Oh, it is, okay, it's not a separate money.
No.
Other than we can knock that down probably, and I mean, Scott's got the twenty in his budget, but, and we're gonna use ARPA on those building improvements, so we can backfund this with ARPA. But as we move forward, if we have funding available, I think we need to get some of this for the fairgrounds specifically, to improve their, the physical environment down there.
Something else too, Doug, that just tripped my memory was, Steph was gonna go for a million dollars for that new Good Neighbor Authority agreement, and we've only got three hundred and fifty thousand in that line. So we might wanna talk to Steph to see where they are on that. That thing too. Well, there's the Health District here right below, that's next nonetheless.
But after that Good Neighbor Authority's.
No, we still haven't signed any contract or anything either, but I think it's something that you might wanna give her a call about. Well, there's the Health District, and it's doubled, of course, because we're fully funding it.
Yeah, Health District.
Has a big hit.
But we can take that out of the indigent fund.
Don't you levy for public health?
You get a levy for, specifically for public health.
But we can't do that this year, right?
No, we can't levy for public defense.
Oh, got it.
Okay, we levy for this full amount, Doug?
Yes.
Alright, I'm assuming we are?
That comes out of our three percent though, right, or is it a separate?
No, it's a separate levy.
It's a separate levy, but it's still included in the overall levy, right?
So how are we gonna show this reduction in the public defense levy? I mean, does that, if that drops your budget by that amount, can't you, you're supposed to show it as a tax break, remember?
Cause what we're showing is the revenue that we're collecting from state.
Okay. We're just, but, so, I don't know how to ask this.
The revenue.
If you drop that public defense, which is our, what, two hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, we have to show, does that affect our three percent on the budget?
It doesn't.
That's how it needs to be.
Instead of the levy, there's a backfilling, you have to check from the state.
Correct.
So on the Health District, all we would do is raise that levy, but that's still under our three percent.
Correct.
We doubled it, or we upped it last year, no? They have nothing in.
We just got the presentation from, um-
Well, and I have that in my truck, I think it's over a hundred and ninety-six thousand.
Yeah, it's two.
Two-ten or something, two oh four. I don't. What, what do we have down here?
Well, it's being reduced, so we're paying for that, for the public defense. I mean, there's some-
Valley County's portion is gonna be two hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. Two hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and sixty.
But the state's paying for something else so that we take this on.
They did Medicaid expansion and took over all the indigent fund, which we don't levy for indigent anymore.
But we still have Medicaid in there.
Yeah, it's not much, it was a, Doug? Forty thousand or something?
Uh, in remaining cash.
Forty-eight thousand.
Two hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty.
Indigent?
Yeah. Indigent, sure.
That's what they said, pay for that for this year.
Oh, well, then that's enough to pay the Health District.
No, I mean, I guess, yes and no, but-
We gotta leave some in.
And we gotta leave some in for burials. Okay, this is an idea, can we use this to pay the Health District and then do burials out of pilt? Or opioid funds or something like that? Well, we could put some hydrocodone inside the casket for the-
Jesus. We want a sustainable fund to pay for that kinda stuff.
It makes sense just to leave some in indigent, you know, you can use some of it.
Well, the junior college situation's the same way, we still have two hundred and fifty thousand in there or something.
Two hundred and forty-six thousand.
And that's lottery funds?
That's liquor dollars.
So Doug, aren't we getting money back on the claims, on the old indigent claims, old people are paying them off?
We're still, yeah, we're getting revenue for those, yes.
Is it a lot, you know?
No, it is approximately
Guess what I'm saying is we could take a hundred thousand of indigent and use it towards Health District.
Absolutely.
And what are you gonna do the next year and the next year and the next year?
Well, that's what I'm asking, how much money's coming in on those little leans?
They're gonna be gone here shortly.
Oh man, some of those, it's gonna take a lifetime.
We can settle those that are we can settle those down. We don't have to give them to state.
About fifteen thousand a year, we collected sixteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, ninety-one dollars this year.
Not that much.
And some of that, like, I mean, the junior college, we could probably take two hundred thousand out of that, but it's gotta be one-time things you're gonna spend it on. So, because junior college, when it comes in, tell me if I'm wrong, Doug, but I think that we were putting all of the money into there and
Well, we're putting a good portion of it, yeah.
It's a split, fifty-fifty between education and between general fund. But we can actually take fifty percent of all that money, um, and reallocate that.
So with the thirty thousand, you're saying we could take fifteen of it in general fund?
No, there's two hundred and forty-nine thousand or two hundred and forty-six thousand in the trust fund right now. But we could take a large portion of that to help fund something in the budget, but again, that's one-time money. We're, we're getting thirty thousand a year right now, we're only, we gave away sixty-seven hundred last month. So we're accumulating those funds all the time, but yes, we can take whatever money we get now, half of it goes to the general fund, half of it goes into that educational fund.
We're, we're no longer putting from the liquor dollars, uh, into the, into the all, since we have such a balance, that, that entire liquor dollar allocation is going into the general.
Do we need to do fifty-fifty? Cause that's what, the way the statute reads.
If
So I mean, we have a large balance, but we should probably transfer that balance and still allocate it correctly. Cause it's, it's a dispersment of fifty-fifty, I think, but. And so we can, you know, we can try and find some of this stuff, but we gotta be really careful, because we went out of all those, we increased everybody's salaries and we added positions, and now we're-
And the positions are what cost us the money.
Yeah.
That's the tough part. You take that fully loaded two wages, it's like, bam, two hundred grand, just like.
And then you gotta plan on that moving forwards.
Well, and I could see maybe with prosecutor, but I'm
So junior college?
Yeah, junior college, commissioners, I, I mean, I'd love to increase that, but the problem is, is it's not utilized as much as we would like, right? Um, I think thirty thousand is appropriate for the budget for that, uh, on an average.
Well, if Gabby was drinking more, we'd make more money off it.
Did you know that alcohol needs to be bought in your county and that is how it is determined? How much we get? It's based on county, it's not based on statewide.
Oh really? I didn't know that.
Thank God we're a resort community. We get a significant amount because we're a resort community in the-
Tobacco supplement, we're all goes in one lump sum.
It's not, it's per county.
Well, see, it's all Gabby's fault.
I said, we need a, we need a bar somewhere. On our own.
Uh, Gabby hasn't pulled up, so on, on average, we only expend sixty-eight hundred a year, which is you know, we really, I think the commissioners wished this was more utilized.
How much do we actually get? What's our payment in the liquor dollars? Is it the full thirty?
Liquor allocation for this quarter, excuse me, for this year, we have received two hundred and thirty thousand. And we, a portion of that goes to the court, uh, for um, for court operations, and that was the the city's agreement, when there was the agreement made between the cities and the counties, that we would get a portion of their liquor dollars, so that portion is from actually the cities during that legislation that was passed.
Doug, is there limits on where we can spend that money?
Liquor dollars just goes into the general fund.
Well, we could do our community stuff for some of that money. Might free up maybe
Let's-
Eighty or a hundred thousand dollars.
We project that in our revenue, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It gets, it doesn't matter if-
In our general fund revenue.
From the revenue, say.
Interesting to see how they fund this other bunch also. I don't think that hits the counties at all, I think they actually apply directly through, we're the first development council and others.
Uh, the next big hit is tort, that's going up, uh, fairly significant.
That's our liability insurance, right?
That is our payment from ICRA.
Holy smokes, two hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and thirty?
That flashes, I don't-
Oh my gosh.
Huh. We didn't have any torts last year, did we? Haven't had a tort in a couple of years. Have we?
Um, well, we have, unfortunately, Mr. Chairman, if you recall.
That we paid. We were torted three times.
Oh, well, those, those guys dropped the suit.
Tort is gonna be going up to two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seventy-two dollars.
Hmm.
Or our insurance premium.
And that was, those are general fund dollars too, right?
No, that's, that's a, well, I mean, no, that's a separate levy.
Well, that's right.
We will have to levy for the full amount, because we don't have any- We will have to levy for the full amount because we don't have any remaining cash. Or torts, so we would be levying for that full amount.
And that and the health, public health, it's gonna be a million bucks. Just for those two.
Health district, we do have a little bit of carryover. Then the last, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Moplin, is the Hutter's Memorial, our contribution.
Well, did she come in and ask for any more?
This is different, this is.
Well, this is for the groups, the guys.
This is actually the payment to the American Legion.
American Legion. I think we'll leave it at that for now.
Yeah, we go, it's, we may have to come back and skinny it a little bit too, we'll see.
And with that, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Moplin, I think our budget works up for today is.
Our, our salaries.
Thank you for making it so easy, you two.
Yeah, you guys are awesome. And with that, do you want to adjourn, Mr. Chairman?
This meeting is adjourned at four.